Okay. Are you, you're gonna be online for the meeting?
I'm on.
Okay. Are you, you're gonna be online for the meeting?
I'll be online for the first.
Okay. All right. I think we're gonna call the meeting to order.
In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section 101.021 of the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conduct its meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise your hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise your hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking the raise your hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located at the bottom of the WebEx screen. Our meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. A request to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comments on a particular matter. Proper channels for communication are listed below. Communications with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday 12 o'clock PM deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment are sending an email to the cityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling and/or leaving a message at 216-664-2210, sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Avenue Suite 501 Cleveland, Ohio 44114. Meeting rules and procedures. The chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize design review advisory committee recommendations if applicable and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
All right. Thank you very much, Marka.
Anthony.
Present.
Luke is not present. Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Sergeant.
Present.
And Slife is not present.
So.
Welcome everyone to the March 7th meeting of the City Planning Commission. So we have a special way to begin today. First, I want to thank Marka for her second tour of duty as interim director and thank you for really the hard work in two transitions. And so we, as a commission, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. And the City Planning Commission has, I think is the only department in the city of Cleveland that has procedure like this that is stated in the charter of the City Planning Commission where the planning director shall be nominated by the commission and appointed by the mayor at his discretion. And pursuant to that, we are really honored to welcome Callie Mersman here. Mayor Justin Bibb is recommending Callie to the commission today for nomination and appointment as the planning director for the city of Cleveland. So we're excited to have you here today. I'm just gonna read a little bit about Callie's background and then commission members. We're gonna hear from her here today. So Callie has served in the Bibb administration as senior strategist for transit and mobility since 2022, guiding mobility projects, initiatives, and policies at the city of Cleveland. Before that, we were lucky to have her here as senior strategist for transit and mobility in the planning commission, where she served us four years as a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator for the planning commission. She's attended the University of Georgia as a foundation fellow, earning a bachelor of science in ecology and received a master's of public affairs with concentrations in local government and sustainability from Indiana University's O'Neill School of Public and Environmental Affairs. She and her family are proud residents of the city of Cleveland. Totally. She has a deep understanding of urban planning, engagement, and equitable development. And I think the commission looks forward to partnering with you, working with you in this next chapter. And we look forward, if you want to come up and say a few words to the commission on this important day.
Yeah, sorry. Before we start, I just want to remind everybody, yeah, please tap the red square on your mic before you move so that everybody can hear you.
Xavier. Thank you, Madam Chair and commission members. It's an honor to be here with you this morning. I appreciate your consideration of the nomination. In my time at the city and prior to that, working with the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, I've had the pleasure of working on three citywide planning initiatives, including a district-wide school travel plan, Vision Zero Safety Action Plan, and the Cleveland Moves Plan, which will be coming to the commission soon for approval. And through those processes, I've really had the wonderful privilege of talking with Cleveland residents across the city, getting to know neighborhoods in intimate detail, and working with stakeholders and partners across the city. And I'm really excited to continue that work and those partnerships through this role. The city planning staff are incredibly talented and passionate and dedicated to this work, and, um, you know, it feels sometimes like we're, we have strong headwinds against us from outside our city, but this is also a moment of incredible potential. We're poised for really meaningful transformation in the public realm and the built environment that improves the lives of our residents and will bring, um, will embrace our community's vibrancy and the vitality that's there, as well as opportunities for continued prosperity and increased prosperity for our residents. So it's an honor to be considered today. This department is my home in City Hall, and in many ways, my home in Cleveland in general, and, um, I'm so honored and privileged to be here.
Thank you. Uh, commission members, any questions for Callie or any insights? Um, well, um, we look forward to your leadership. Leadership is everything, um, and so, uh, maybe one question, uh, for you, um, uh, any kind of, um, early insights from having been down in the mayor's office and coming back of, uh, areas of focus or things that you're kind of looking towards?
Yes, I'm very interested in collaborating closely with departments that, um, really are responsible for burying out the work that the Planning Commission leads. This department is responsible for long-term strategy, vision, setting the tone for what we want our communities to look like into the future, and so much of that is reliant on implementation through our sister departments in integrated development, as well as in the operations cluster, public works and capital projects. Um, the, the initiatives that I have enjoyed working with the most in my time at the city are ones where there's a need or an opportunity that we don't yet have a set process, and we have the opportunity to work with folks from a variety of perspectives and needs to develop an approach that works and that delivers those results. So, um, some examples of that in my experience are the Speed Table program. I know we're working right now on pedestrianizing streets and creating more vibrant public spaces for people to be in, um, taking that interdisciplinary lens and continuing to, uh, expand the partnerships that the department has with external partners, as well as our internal departments, is something I'm really excited about.
Uh, and one area that, um, I think we've been trying to work on, uh, over the last few years, sort of the commission and the staff, is really the commission itself really helping people through the process, being very customer-oriented and making it easy for people to, to come and get through the process. And so I think we look forward to continuing that with you to make sure that we're really, um, improving, um, how people are able to do business with the city and get projects done more quickly. And, uh, and so we're trying to make some process improvements ourselves, and I think we'll look forward to working with you to kind of further that and, uh, kind of change the perception of like coming before this body is, you know, a difficult thing, and we're actually here to help people get through the process, but of course, um, also protect the city at the same time, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we will need, um, to actually vote, so we'll need here actually for us to nominate, um, Callie as the, uh, second woman. I don't know how many pla, is it eleventh planning director? Well, there, yeah, what it officially, um, but, um, so can we have a motion?
Sure. Make a motion. Oh, I'm stopping. I'd like to make a motion for the nomination of Callie Mersman as Director of City Planning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, can we call the roll?
Anthony.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, um, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much, likewise.
First order of businesses, we need, uh, seven commission members and two alternates, as you know. Be honest.
Thank you.
We were thinking end of meeting.
End of meeting. Uh, yeah, uh, thank you very much. All right, next item is to approve the minutes from the February twenty-first meeting. We had them in advance. We also have a copy if anybody needs them from the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-first.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Um, all right, first, uh, item is lots put in consolidations, putting into two lots. Um, this is at three four two two Seymour Avenue. Is Joe Wallace here? That's fine. Joe, welcome. Yeah, come on up, just press the button. You probably have your slides up there.
So this property is consistent with everything that's over there, meets the, um, consistent with building setbacks. No, I'm saying it's, it's ju, it's consistent with everything that's on that street. It's consistent with the building setbacks for the properties over there. The duplex with, uh, finished third floor, two beds, two baths on each floor. This lot is split evenly down the center, which is consistent with how it previously was before the lot was consolidated.
Is there a house on both sides?
Uh, yes.
So if you go back, um, yeah, so, yeah, let me see.
You can see it here, sets back. Uh, hold on. Yeah, let's stay here. So that's the, uh...
The lot.
The lot, and that house on the back of it is the house next door. So it sits probably seventy feet from the street, from Seymour.
And what's the width of the lot you're splitting to?
It's twenty-seven and a half feet, which is consistent with what it was before it was consolidated.
And is this zone two family?
Yes.
Is it single family or two family? Yeah, I think just we need to make sure that it's zone two family because we're splitting to a substandard lot with not a single family but a two, it's two units, right?
Yes, yes.
Is it rental for sale?
Yes, for rent.
For rent?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's just confirm that, do you know, Shannon?
No.
It's two family.
B one.
B one. Okay. All right, commission members.
I want to make a motion to approve the last split at thirty-four point two Seymour Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next three items, two, let me just see which ones we've got, uh, text amendment, a text amendment against no use are zoning hearings, so they are public hearings. Um, and, uh, for, um, zoning matters, first we hear a presentation from staff, then we'll have from sponsor, um, or, uh, could be the owner, um, and then we'll take public comment. So it is a public hearing. We'll first take, um, any, um, testimony from those in favor of the zoning change, uh, and then those who are opposed or have any questions for, um, on the matter. Uh, please state your name clearly if you're gonna speak from the public, uh, and keep your comments to two minutes or less. So with that, the first item is a zoning text amendment, one eight eight two zero two five. Um, this is to enact a new section three forty-seven two one of the codified ordinance relating to smoke shops.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm going to talk about, uh, both of the ordinances, um, together, if that is okay. They're part of a greater package.
So that's the second one?
That's correct.
Uh, we need to vote on them separately?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the second ordinance, just so, uh, you can see is on the next page, on six, is one eight nine two zero two five, so two, two separate, two separate motions.
Thank you. Yes. All right, good morning, Madam Chair, commission members, Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. I'm joined here today, uh, with the Director of Public Health, um, Dr. Maloryus, um, who has worked with this, with me on this legislation, as well as Austin Davis from the mayor's office and the law department, um, on these two ordinances. So I will walk through this fairly quickly, but, uh, we'll talk about the purpose of the legislation, the background information, and then the two, uh, ordinances regarding smoke shops, as well as window signs, um, for the entire city. So the purpose of this legislation, uh, this became a matter of, uh, a concern over the last year, two years, um, after we passed the legislation around, um, adult use recreational medical marijuana dispensaries, um, for the city, actually last March, um, a year ago, uh, couple weeks. And, uh, it came up at council table as we went through this legislation around the proliferation and the abundance of smoke shops and vape shops that have popped up, um, pretty much every corner across the city of Cleveland. I believe there's over, um, probably documented or, um, permitted over four hundred of these across the city of Cleveland. Uh, and so really, the purpose of this legislation is to regulate the location of those businesses, uh, to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of all Clevelanders, especially our children. Uh, it also does protect the neighborhood from negative externalities and secondary effects created by the concentration and clustering and oversaturation of these businesses. And we really want to promote the public health, safety, and welfare by encouraging walkability, and as you know, window covering, covering windows completely a hundred percent with signs, uh, and other things has, uh, negative impact on public safety. And so we want to address that with the second ordinance that you'll see here today. Um, just a little bit of background again, we passed the legislation last year after the December twenty twenty-three, um, vote, or the November twenty twenty-three vote that allowed adult use, uh, medical mer, and medical marijuana across the entire state of Cle, uh, Ohio, sorry. Uh, and so we established three forty-seven point one nine and really amended, uh, business code sections, uh, regarding the locations of these, uh, adult, uh, licensed medical, uh, marijuana dispensaries cultivators, processors. Um, we're really in alignment with the rules and regulations laid out by the state of Ohio. And really just kind of drawing, uh, information here regarding the regulations around those, uh, particularly about, uh, the, the businesses and how they run themselves regarding, uh, security systems, there's regulations at the state level on displaying the product, including the amount, and how much cannabis can and cannot be stored in cases for public viewing. Um, the hours are limited from seven AM to nine PM across the city, um, across the state. And then really around strict advertising regulations, this is really important because, um, the state of Ohio regulates that no product likeness is to be displayed to the public or directed towards children, uh, specifically towards our right of ways, uh, no uses of cartoon characters or pop icons. Um, they're not permitted to depart from the registered name using things like slang terms, uh, similar references for cannabis products, paraphernalia, and other mediums, uh, in the public right of way or on public property. Uh, they cannot suggest or indicate that the location or the product that they are selling has been falsely, uh, enforced and endorsed by the Division of Cannabis. And then they also must approve of all depictions, representations, and brandings of these businesses. And so the current, uh, state of marijuana law in Cleveland is that we allow them in local retail business districts with, but they are prohibited from being, uh, five hundred feet from churches, parks, schools, daycares, rec centers, and libraries. And that's in alignment with the Ohio revised code. Um, I really want to just to put this out here so that if you are a, uh, state licensed facility, um, you must, uh, show this logo in your window facing the public right of way so that people know that you're an actual state licensed facility. Um, there's only one hundred and thirty-nine state licensed facilities across the entire state of Ohio, and these are the only state licensed facilities that are legally operating here within the city of Cleveland. Uh, and so this is really for you all to take in, but also for, um, the public, because we've received, uh, tens of hundreds of calls, um, and through three one one of, uh, dispensaries popping up and, uh, uh, advertising themselves as state licensed. Uh, again, this is just showing pictures that you saw previously of what those, these facilities look like on the interior and exterior for the state license. As you can tell, they're heavily regulated by the state. And so going into this, this is a, the two ordinance here, a one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine are actually a part of a larger package, uh, with the, um, Director of Public Health as it relates to, um, tobacco, nicotine accessories, advertising, and public health. Uh, what you don't, won't see here today is ordinance one eighty-six, which is, relates to the business code and the illegal distribution of tobacco and nicotine products. Also, uh, it's chapter one eighty-seven, or ordinance number one eighty-seven, which establishes a tobacco retail licensing program through the Division of Assessments and Licensing. So in the next ordinance here is the location of smoke shops, which is our specific uses regulated section, as well as, uh, the window signage and our sign code in chapter three fifty. Uh, and so in specific uses regulated, we regulate certain uses. Uh, the most recent one you may remember besides the adult use is, um, the small box discount retail. And so in this ordinance, we are establishing what the definition of a smoke shop is, and so that's going to be any retail establishment at which twenty percent or more of the floor shelf and or display areas individually or in the aggregate is used for the sale of smoke shop products such as kratom, CBD oils, Delta Eight, and other cap cannabinoids. Uh, also tobacco and nicotine products, um, all types of electronic smoking devices such as vapes, or and or any accessories to the above, so papers, water pipes, um, there's a long list, if you would like, I can provide it. This does exclude the state licensed marijuana facilities, which are regulated elsewhere. Um, these are the new permits within the past six months. This was introduced about a month ago at council, uh, and it's, it's interesting, um, there's been over, um... There's been over forty-two since January first of this year for, um, establishing the use of smoke shops. And this can be a little misleading in terms of the, any data in the yellow, um, because the city of Cleveland really just wasn't keeping up with, um, all to define, smoke shops wasn't defined, right? Uh, and it wasn't going on the occupancy permits, but with the introduction of this legislation, building and housing, has been making sure that they include it for the occupancy permits, um, going forward. So additionally, it's the, this is another buffer regulation, so any new smoke shops have to be at least ten, two miles or ten thousand five hundred and sixty feet from any, uh, existing smoke shops. No smoke shop will be located or relocated within five hundred feet from a church, public library, public playground, public park, or school. And then the Director of City Planning, or the Department of City Planning, will maintain a map of the existing smoke shop locations and other information necessary to determine compliance with the spacing regulations. And this is really important as it relates to the permitting and the permitting slide that I just showed you, in that for us to be able to maintain a map, we need to know what is actually a smoke shop. And a lot of these smoke shops are popping up in basically every gas station, corner store, um, and then there's some that are just explicitly smoke shops.
Another question.
Yep. Oh, sorry. So these are the existing smoke shops based on our Google data, uh, and other, and the city's permitting data of, um, the, um, existing ones that we are aware of, as well as some of the tobacco retail information that was, uh, given to us by the county and the state. Uh, and this is really important because if you look at where the hotspot is here on the near west side and the, oh... Yep, and, uh, and also Clark Fulton. Uh, in fact, Pearl Avenue here in the previous slide has been the hotspot of the most recent permits that have come through, but you can see that this is kind of following, uh, that map. That's not to say that the east side doesn't have... But you can see that this is kind of following uh that map. That's not to say that the east side doesn't have a ton of these smoke shops. It's just to say that they are maybe not, um, they have not pulled occupancy permit.
Madam Chair Shannon, while we're here, I just, can we go back to the slide where you talk about any retail establishment, twenty percent or more? I think it was one back. And I feel like you started to say this, so, and I know this is a summary, so I guess I'm, I am thinking about corner stores, delis, you know, inconvenience stores, things of that nature. So they would now, previously they were not considered smoke shops, but now with this twenty percent or more, they would fall under that category?
They would fall under the, anything that's legally existing with a certificate of occupancy will be grandfathered in. But anything that is not legally existing without a proper certificate of occupancy, they will need to obtain that certificate of occupancy uh as well as uh the tobacco license uh that will come, come down the line with this legislation.
Which our question, a corner store is not going to meet the twenty percent threshold, so they're not being counted.
They're not being counted.
They're not being counted.
They're not.
There's just no way that even any corner store will be twenty percent of, it might be twenty percent of revenue, but it's not going to be twenty percent of floor area.
That's correct. And so the twenty percent, um, the twenty percent, they'll require a floor shelf um layout in their permitting process to understand how much of their retail space they're dedicating to the sale of these types of smoke shops. But those like little corner stores or delis, we probably do not meet that twenty percent threshold as um the chairwoman stated.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, but for Shannon.
Yeah.
Um, are some of the current smoke shops selling the same cannabinoids as the dispensaries?
No. There's, yeah, go ahead. I can defer to the Director of Public Health.
Longtime listener, first time caller. Hello, thank you. Um, uh, so we don't, we, we think so, probably, that that that's happening. Uh, we went on a, a, a visit um Wednesday uh with Councilman Conwell, Councilwoman Santana, uh two members of Idea Stream, one of whom's he- here today um to, to kind of visit these smoke shops in the Clark Fulton neighborhood. And I mean, they're, seems like they, they, they might be. And so what, what chapter one eighty-seven gives us the, the power to do would be to do health inspections the same way we do, do restaurants. And if they don't get a license uh through us, then we would close them down the same way we, we close down restaurants that don't have a license through us. So separate from one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine, but, but definitely part of the package.
The other part of the geography that's strange is that um the, the southern key map there, i- is that Slavic Village, Lee Harbor? Is that in the flats? It's odd. It's like down in the valley. Why, what is that? This doesn't make sense.
I will defer uh one of G R G I S person did this, Ari. So the map is probably maybe a little bit more obvious. That's a different way to look at it. So it doesn't necessarily look in the valley here. I think in the, think of
The valley.
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. Go on.
So just to sum up, this is the smoke shop legislation. Again, any uh any existing facilities that have an upper occupancy permit will be grandfathered in. The others will need to obtain an occupancy permit. They may not be using their entire business as a smoke shop, but they could get it as an accessory use. And then they will be subjected to the tobacco licensing requirement as all facilities will be. The next ordinance is important here is enacting three fifty point one twenty-one to limit the window sign coverage to a maximum of twenty-five percent of all window areas. Currently, all business identification wall signage is subject to um an equation, if you will. Uh, and it's uh the twenty-five percent is normally temporary, so it's really calls into issues as it pertains to enforcement of the surrounding um of full window coverage. And what does that mean for uh the enforcement officers with our city? Um, each facade is considered separately. Uh, so if you're a corner, each side will be considered separately. All windows and glass portions of doors across uh each facade will be, is considered as one. So you're twenty-five percent across all trans apparent surfaces. It also pertains to all temporary and all permanent signs. That's important because there's a hard differentiation between is this temporary? I'm showing my products. This may be temporary for now, but it may be permanent. Generally, they most end up permanent. And then transparent signs are measured also in that equation. And so I bring this to attention. We get a lot of, I've received a lot of complaints over the course of the last couple of months from council people and residents about is this, is this permitted? And enforcement struggles to enforce the twenty-five percent because there's no way for them to really tell whether it's temporary or permanent. A lot of times, these signs have been put up uh without going through any design review process, even though most of these fall into design review corridors. And so this is just giving you an idea of what that looks like, but also speaking back to when you think about the smoke shops and the regulations of the state licensed facilities, um, this is completely contradictory to it. And it's also, a lot of this type of advertisement is directed uh directly at our schools, rec centers, churches, uh and residential areas. Here's another example. Uh, they're calling themselves dispensaries, so the public thinks that they're legitimate state licensed dispensaries, which is why I showed the logo from the Division of Commerce previously in that list. Uh, so the public is well aware that there's only actually six state licensed facilities. The rest that you see are not legal, um, legal dispensaries in the sense of a state license under the um Ohio uh Department of Commerce. These likely. Uh, here's another example. I'm showing this last um, this image here so that you understand that twenty-five percent will not just affect smoke shops uh and businesses like that, but it'll affect all types of business, every business that's out there putting uh full coverage across their windows. Uh, and it's really important um as it pertains to um, you know, public safety because if we're covering all the windows and we can't see in, we also can't see out. Um, and it does not enable walkability across the city, which is one of the things that city planning strives for as we make our streets safer. And so with that, I ask for your approval on these two uh very important um ordinances uh that we have worked on. And then I will also let Dr. Malolius say anything if he would like.
I, I think we, we covered it. Uh, you know, I so, um, I'll just add that the Police Department does have a vice unit looking into this. Um, but they can't get into these places the same way the Health Department would be able to through these inspections. And so we're looking forward to that collaboration between multiple departments to put a stop to this.
Thank you very much. Any question, Commission members?
I just want to thank you um for the follow-up on this and the kind of, um, I imagine this is as we're, this is new and evolving and iterative, that um this is something that we're just gonna have to keep an eye on. Um, cause that's moving and um, you know, so I thank you for like following up on the first piece of legislation.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to
Madam Chair, I'd like to make motion to approve ordinance number one eight eight two zero two five.
Second. A motion and a second call to roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make motion to approve ordinance number one eight nine dash two zero two five.
Second. Motion and a second call to roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yeah.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, we have one more conditional use, which is uh Shannon, are you doing this other one on page seven?
I can.
It's a townhouse in a two-up district. Thank you so much. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh, we- in a two-up district, this is West Tech um Town Homes. Um, and this is at Tuck's Track Drive and West Tech Way. I don't know that. So, um, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Shannon Leonard. Uh, they also follow in the next design review, I believe.
Can we hear them both then?
Yes, I think both an idea.
Okay. Uh, who's here to speak? John Wagner?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair.
John Wagner is the representative uh from City Architecture.
Okay. Uh, John, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I like to hear it. Um, go on.
All right. You want me to give the presentation or are you doing the conditional use?
Um, first, well, well, basically Shannon, we'll introduce the conditional use. Um, then you'll present just so we can see the whole thing, uh, and so can the public, and then we'll take public testimony.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Good mornings. Uh, so this project is located here um along in, in two-family district here off of West Tech Way. Uh, and it's in two parts. And so as you know, under the townhouse code, any town, new townhouse developments that fall in a single family or two-family require conditional use in this commission. Uh, and really, you must determine based on the application if the townhouse use shall be permitted here. Uh, what you'll notice here that there is at Tuck's Track Drive at the Northern View, there is a townhouse project that was already there that is existing. Uh, and if you look at it, you'll notice based on um many townhouse projects that you've seen in the townhouse code that we revised um about two years ago, that these are a product of the former townhouse code uh with the front-facing garages uh that don't really speak to the street. They're kind of like a suburban development. Uh, the proposal here on the left is the proposed project uh as well as just giving you some existing contacts along Tuck's Track on the southwestern side. And so what you're really looking at is, is the development visually compatible uh with nearby properties and scale, height, setbacks, orientation to existing streets, roof lines, architectural character, materials, colors, and the proportion of architectural features. And so this is just giving you an idea of what that rendering looks like around the um curb there, but also looking at the Southern View, there's a few new houses. Uh, and then looking further down West Ninety-Eight Street and West Tech Way, uh, just giving you an idea what's at the end of the street. And then you're also making sure that the site layout is arranged so as to create visual interest, promote security and public safety. We want safe, efficient, and comfortable pedestrian and vehicle circulation and conservative natural features and provided usable common and private open space. And as you look at the center picture here, you'll notice that around this curb here is the new project uh really orienting towards the public right of way, having only one curb cut going to the rear of the properties and then the driveways and the garages on the rear uh facing uh north or east, I mean, west. And again, just kind of looking at the orientation here along West Tech Way and Tuck's Avenue, uh, and then I'll let the um Mr. Wagner further explain any of the design issues. But you'll see that the, the homes do line up with the newer homes along the eastern uh side as well as the western side in terms of setback in the open space along with the frontage features, again, with the uh traffic going to the rear uh symbolized to be a disturbance unlike the older townhouse project already located here. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Wagner uh to talk about the design uh as you guys make your determination here.
All right. Am I up?
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, John Wagner from City Architecture. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to do this virtually uh out of an abundance of caution. Um, I was hanging out with some folks who recently told me that they were uh positive for COVID, so I don't want to give it to anybody else. Um, thank you, Shannon, for a great presentation. I will sort of skip through this pretty quickly because you've seen a lot of it um through that presentation, a lot of the drawings, and understand it. Um, but it is a, a project that City Architecture started, uh, which makes me feel old, probably twenty-plus years ago, um, where we developed a master plan in this Tuck's Way uh near the West Tech High School. Um, we constructed several new single-family homes and obviously the more suburban, um, which we're not doing anymore, uh, townhome style that is up in the upper uh left corner of this site plan. What we're proposing to build are twelve new townhomes, three different unit types. You know, in, um, four, I think it's four single-family lots and then a series of cluster lots that will be consolidated and re-divided um at a later date once we get all of this approval. Um, so next slide, please. Uh, for landscaping, uh, you know, I'll, I'll hit the buzzwords, you know, native, adaptive plants, sort of rich uh foundation plantings along with uh, you know, the introduction of, of trees near the street, um, but not in the public uh right-of-way because of uh existing utilities and light poles that we want to maintain. We are also uh going to introduce new uh shade trees and some enhancements to the central green space um, which is open for public use, but it is owned privately uh by the Neighborhood Association. Um, next slide, please. The next five to seven slides, so you can sort of slowly go through them, are floor plans and building plans. And what I'd like to hit on is that we have three different unit types, all three-bedroom, uh, two-and-a-half-ish baths, uh, two-car garages in a variety of living styles. So it's a traditional townhome with the main living on the second floor. It's a two-story unit where the living is on the ground floor and the bedrooms are up. And then a, a longer end unit that has uh living on the ground floor with uh a bedroom and a bathroom, uh, and a couple of bedrooms up to promote uh aging in place um as an option, uh, should people want that type of living. Um, the materials are a mix of, you know, on the ground floor, masonry, precast, some fiber cement, and then the, the bulk of the building, uh, the front and the rears is a mix of vinyl, vertical, and horizontal siding, um asphalt shingle roofs, um, you know, arranged in a way, you can go to the next slide, please, in uh an architecture that is new and modern, yet still reminiscent of traditional forms. We're taking uh the traditional gable end and tweaking it a little bit, trying to use big windows uh to get eyes on the street and not lots of natural light into relatively small and compact homes. Um, but using those a little bit more expensive, more durable materials um on the ground floor where you touch and feel them. Uh, next slide, please. So I think you've seen some of these and we can sort of go through these, maybe pause on the final renderings um as we get through, uh, but sort of images of the front and the rear showing that the sort of the same language wraps around, albeit maybe not the brick, um, but we're trying to be very uh judicious with our use of expensive materials. Um, and then we are uh creating this arrayed townhome, which, you know, looks curved, but it is truly a segmented building. Um, we think it will fit the end of that uh cluster or that central parkway uh very nicely. And then lastly, you can see some of the improvements. The existing trees will be maintained in the central green space as well as um some new trees added, um, and then the existing light poles and the single curb cuts, which we think is a far better approach than um frankly, what we previously did. So I feel bad about that.
Sorry.
Uh, okay. So um before we uh, we go, I'm, I am going to open it up uh for public comment. Um, so it, is there anybody here who is um, wants to speak on this matter uh in favor of this, either the, the, or it's a it could be either the um, the conditional use or the design review? Is there anybody that has any questions or is opposed to um the conditional use? All right, we'll close the public portion and uh have questions either on the zoning or the design review. You got final design review? Was there anything from local that we need to know about?
Uh, Madam Chair, Nathan Lowell, the neighborhood planner, is online. Uh, he, I will defer to that question to him.
Good morning, everybody. Um, hey Lowell, City Planning, Barbara City Planner. Uh, this is approved, it's presented at local design review. Um, they thought it was a great project and we as staff agree it's very contextual and appropriate for the neighborhood and to commend both the developer and the architects on it.
Okay. Uh, Commission members?
Um, Madam Chair, I just had a couple of questions. Um, are these on a slab? Number one. I just have a couple of questions. Are these on a slab? And how many square feet is each condo?
Uh, yes, they're on a Uh, yes, they're on a slab.
Okay.
Um, exact, uh, the smallest townhome I believe is 15 or 1700, 1700 square feet. Uh, the middle one is about 1800 and the larger one is just under 2,000 square feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I too, I actually really liked the design. I, I agree with you, John, about these, um, it's kind of okay that maybe it took a while to build these because I actually really liked the design a lot. My only question is like the ends of the units aren't, um, as, as sort of, um, they look like ends of units, um, and, and sort of like, um, not as, um, interesting as the front. And I understand why and just pointing it out, which is, um, these are for sale, right? So, um, those end units could be, um, especially on the top left here, um, could be really even more desirable if the end unit had that kind of, you know, expansive glass treatments or really thinking about them, but I know there's probably not room for that. It's, they're just not as inspired on the end, but I understand it, but I really like the architecture.
Thank you. I understand too, and we certainly could look at it. It's, it's, it's a stairwell, right? That's on the end of the building. Um, and the comp, the, the, the compromise is if you flip the unit and put the stair in the middle, then you end up with two front doors next to each other. And that does, that feels less like home or an individual home to me than
Yeah.
Separate.
Um, yeah, I may, maybe, uh, you, uh, this isn't going to be a condition or anything, but maybe one compromise would be to use the same window typology of those larger without kind of a square, like a cro, you know, like the, the four cross molyon that has the same language, the contemporary language you have on the front might actually resolve what I'm feeling. Do you know what I mean?
I do. I understood.
Um, but totally your call. Um, it's not a, it's not a condition. Um, okay. Going first, yeah.
Um, I move that we approve the conditional use for townhomes in the 2F District, uh, West Tech Townhomes. Address tuck's track drive and West Tech Way.
A second?
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is far west is interview. Thank you, Shannon.
And this is final, right?
That, that was final approval, yeah.
Um, do we need two motions for the conditional?
Sorry, sorry. We need the second motion. Sorry, final approval.
Um, I move that we approve FW 2004 dash 13 West Tech Townhome Development. Address tuck's track drive and West Tech Way. Uh, this is for final approval.
A second?
A motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next one's far west. This is 2024 dash 01 54th and Bridge. Um, 1843 West 54th. Um, it's Andrew from Key State Homes. Here this?
I'm Martin. Andrew is my partner and the builder. He is literally on the way. Should be here in about three minutes. Can we swap with?
You want to just, do you want to do it without him or do you want to wait?
Uh, I prefer wait because he'll be able to address.
Let's go on to the next one. Um, and the next one is 2024 dash 034. This is near west. This is 2915 West 14th Street. Um, and we have Ram Post, Jim Clark, Sixmo. This is for schematic. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you show answers to the penalty of perjury?
Yeah.
And then hit the button. And, uh, this is schematic approval.
Yes. All right. Well, good morning and thank you for having me. I am Ram Post with Sixmo.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, hit the, hit the middle button. Okay, perfect. All right. So, um, our project is, um, here in the near west district to kind of the left, right, district level, right, kind of at the intersection of, uh, 490 there, um, and, uh, on West 14th, uh, the site is owned, uh, MFD2. Um, and it currently, if you go to the right, there are existing four parcels of residential homes. And what we're looking to do is that, um, the owners of those homes right now are looking to, um, move homes for themselves, um, as well as provide additional housing on the lot. So they're looking to consolidate, uh, and then divide up into six, uh, single family homes, um, uh, across the site. So I will look there. So here's kind of a bird's eye view, West 14th down at the bottom. We have on the left castle on the right, uh, a few views. If you can see in, uh, the building to the left is the CMHA Housing Apartment Building directly to the left of the site. Um, right now there are three single family homes with detached garages, uh, on the site that are owned by the, um, individuals who are developing this. They plan to, um, remove their current homes and build the new homes and then live with, live in those homes and then sell the other ones. Here's the existing site. So you can see the three buildings, detached garages. There's an existing tree, uh, towards the, um, uh, next to the back alley that is, uh, scheduled to remain. It's a large old tree that we want to keep. Um, and then if we go to the next page, this is our site plan here. So what we're looking to do is, uh, right now there's a bunch of different driveways and different individual, uh, houses and parcels. We're looking to consolidate this into, uh, one common shared drive, really clean up the, uh, the street curb edge into one single point of entry. Um, we, you know, we realize that this is a, um, you know, there's a bike lane out there. We're trying to keep it a little bit safer and have less cars going in and out, um, with all the curb cuts. So it's one curb cut, uh, and it's single drive. The, uh, houses have garages in the back that are access from the back, so they're hidden from the front. Um, and then there's a green space in the back along the back alley there.
Demolition been approved?
Uh, we are not in a, uh, design review district for demolition. Um, here's kind of a, just a real quick, kind of contextual elevation of the individual houses. The apartment building is to the left, uh, the neighborhood is to the right. Um, so it's the front elevation and to the back. Um, we're in, uh, that multifamily district. So we kind of see this development as being sort of a, uh, kind of a step down bridge between the big block apartment building and then an existing neighborhood homes, um, to the right.
Get a clarification? The design review is a design review district. Never heard of a design review district where there's no demolition. This is in the near west, right?
Yes, but it's a
All right, but isn't it true that demolition from a design review district come before design review?
Yeah, well, if it's, if it's in a design review district, this one is not. It's not in design review district. The only reason it's before us now is because it's new construction. So new construction, no matter where it's located, comes to us.
So this listed as in the design review district of near west is not true?
So it's reviewed by the near west committee because it's in, because it's new construction.
But it's not in the
Not in the design review district, no.
Thank you for the clarification.
There you go. Um, so then here's a, a sheet, quick materials that we're looking to do. Um, you know, higher quality materials on the ground floor with, you know, stone and brick, um, with some different variety of settings, board and batten, um, some vertical and horizontal, some shake siding. Uh, we're looking to have a combination of a couple of roofs, asphalt shingles, metal, uh, standing metal seam. Uh, we're looking to have some, uh, nice entry door features. Um, each one of these buildings is three stories. Um, there'll be a roof deck on top. Um, so looking to have a, a nice little roof to go up on top. And then, uh, here's a view from the street, uh, that again, that building is to the left and the existing residential to the right. Uh, we will be, um, you know, the, again, you can see that single drive, uh, off to the left. If we kind of rotate a little bit to the left, here's kind of a straight on shot. Um, picking up some of the forms of the existing buildings throughout the neighborhood with the, uh, gable roofs and the pitch roofs. Um, and then the front porches. Each one of these, this is the green space in the back with the existing tree and the, uh, garage entrances. And then the rest of this is kind of the technical stuff. We have our stormwater and grading plan. Uh, we met with Petbot and we met with, uh, Sewer and Sanitary, working with all those individuals to make sure that we're making our right connections, leaving them with what they need. Uh, here's a landscape plan. So in the, the, the park lawn, what we're focused is to try to, uh, right now there aren't any trees along the street, the front street park. So we're looking to add back in those streets, keep the continuity of those street trees down, down through the neighborhood. Then backfill it with, uh, you know, some small more ornamental trees between the sidewalk and the houses. And then balance out the vegetation on the front with native plants, uh, along the front. The lighting, uh, plans kind of show, uh, where those lighting fixtures go, trying to keep some ornamental lighting on these buildings, keep the lighting low, but decorative and nice. And then the balance of this is just a series of floor plans.
Okay, we don't need to see them.
Yeah.
Um, whereas you went to local, was there any comments from local designer view?
Uh, yes. So we've been through, uh, we've been through the near west design review. Um, we've had that, uh, obviously, um, conceptual approval. Uh, we just got schematic approval. Um, we met with, um, the, uh, Tremont, uh, Development Group. And then on Wednesday, we just met with the Block Club, um, and got approval from them. Um, so we've been, uh, marching through the processes, um, anywhere.
Okay. See Donna, Donna, you want to say anything?
Good morning, everyone. Um, this is Donna Gregonis, the Tremont West Development Corporation. Um, Madam Chair and members of the commission, thanks for the opportunity to continuously share our community's perspective. Um, Tremont West Development Corporation really values your collaboration with the commission and appreciates your commitment to encouraging community input. Um, so this project did recently present to Economic Development Committee twice. Um, the developers even showed up last night, um, and an engaged and productive discussion took place. And we'd really like to recognize that the development team has made a great deal of effort to incorporate a lot of the community feedback. And the project really has changed significantly from its first iteration. Um, their willingness to adjust the site plan, um, including reducing curb cuts along West 14th Street and ensuring that no variances are now required, really demonstrates an effort to respond to neighborhood concerns. So thank you to Sixmo and the developers for that. Um, and then additionally, we've had ongoing productive conversations with the developers, um, even as recently as last night. And appreciate, um, their discussion and adaptability. And we recognize the architects' efforts to pivot quickly and look forward to seeing how the project evolves. But given these thoughtful changes, the neighborhood is in fa- favor of the project and especially pleased that the current residents, um, are able to stay with this new change. And the outcome really speaks to the power of collaboration between developers and the community. And while we support the project in its current form, we really encourage the design team, um, to continue refining the architectural approach, um, not asking for new development to mimic the existing historic structures, but look for design to be looked at in a greater detail that adds to Tremont's housing stock in a thoughtful way. Um, and we believe you'll do that. Um, and just wanted to add to the commission that this is a highly visible site within the neighborhood. Um, and, um, we'd like to see a proposal that complements what is being lost. Um, because some, there's still a large swath of the neighborhood that believes that this proposal does not offer a meaningful net gain to warrant such a reversible changes in losing the current existing homes. Um, but understand that it's a complicated process. So thank you very much, um, and thanks for your dedication to Tremont and Cleveland.
Okay. Commission members, questions, comments?
Um, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, for final approval on 2915 West 14th Street Development with the condition that any additional improvements or recommendations are cleared by the city planning staff.
So what that means is that you still have to go back to local and work with them on refining the design. It's not, you don't have blanket final. We're basically saying you don't have to come back here. If you work out the design with Tremont West, the staff has the authority to sign off and you don't need to come back here. But understood?
Understood.
But if you can't work it out with them, then you will have to come back.
Okay.
All right, a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Um, so we have three demolitions, um, from the county land bank. Oh, actually no, one of them is from, there, only one is from the county land bank, but three demolitions in a row. We can probably do these pretty quickly. Uh, 4814 Finn Ave. Uh, this is from the land bank. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you show answers to the penalty of perjury? This is for Kalen Payne.
Uh, yes, yes, I do.
Okay. You, your slides are up.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you again for, uh, having us this morning, Madam Chair and commission members. Uh, the property in question here is located at the northern end of the central southeast Design Review District. Uh, this is a small, single family cake, uh, built in 1890. Uh, see some of the other, uh, attributes down there. You know, it's pretty small, bedroom, one bath, no garage, um, small little basement. Uh, next slide. Um, again, here, just a little bit of context, we're kind of at the, uh, northern end, as I said, of that central southeast Design Review District. Uh, it's right off Broadway, not really too noticeable from the street. Um, again, it's tucked in really behind, uh, you know, commercial retail. We have some mixed use right along that area as well. Uh, next slide, if you will. And we really have the current conditions, uh, as we see in the top picture. This is the, uh, building as it is now. You know, it has suffered quite a bit of dilatation over the last several years since we got it. Uh, here, roof, broken windows, uh, doors, all that kind of stuff. Uh, this is also the street level. If you're looking over at Broadway, down Finn, um, really don't totally see it from the street unless you start walking up towards that or towards the site there. Uh, more exterior, uh, system conditions. We do have it boarded up. It has been that way for quite a while. So it, it is boarded up and everything currently. Uh, inside, um, it's really extremely poor condition. Uh, there's no HVAC system, usable plumbing fixtures or kitchen amenities. Uh, the electrical system is also, when they outdated and deteriorated.
I think we're good. I have to be honest. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, right.
And you're gonna remove the curb and gra- grass seed. There it is. Okay.
Right, yeah. So we'll, we'll actually be maintaining, uh, the curb and everything since there's no actual, uh, driveway to it. So we'll maintain.
Okay. We're getting rid of the basements, everything, just seed.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, for approval of CSE 2025 dash 010 location 4814 Finn Avenue, uh, for demolition.
A second?
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next one is 2826 E 79th Street. Uh, this is also a demolition. Elizabeth Mackey is here for both of them. So come on up, while two of you. I don't need to swear you in. So, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam and the committee. I am Beth Mackey with the City Cleveland Demolition Bureau. Um, my colleague here in Natani Deruter with the Economic Development Office of the city. This is a joint project, uh, between the two departments. Um, a group of, you'll be hearing six projects total from me today. Um, all six, uh, groups of projects being presented, part of a larger group of All six, uh, groups of projects being presented are part of a larger group of projects that the Department of Building and Housing Demo Bureau is demolishing on behalf of the Department of Economic Development. These project sites are in proximity to the existing Opportunity Corridor and are within the footprint of the Opportunity Corridor Development Zone. The Opportunity Corridor Development Zone contains the largest concentration of vacant land. By combining targeted demolitions with these vacant lands, the Department of Economic Development will advance investment in physical development, human capital development, economic opportunities. For more than 10 years, the City of Cleveland, Community Development Corporations, and various other partners have invested significant time, energy, and resources with planning development activities in the development zone. And the vision of the development zone continues to be targeted, planning initiative, which is designed to create a pipeline of economic opportunities that'll provide residents with employment and housing. So to meet that, demolition of existing structures do needs to occur. First one being East 79th. There are two structures on this particular parcel, uh, it's owned general. Land uses start with walk-up. The City of Cleveland owns this since 2018, it is condemned. We've done all of our environmental, uh, studies on it and we are ready to proceed with demolition. It's on, uh, East 79th on the west side. Just a, a broader scope of where it sits. Here are some elevation photos. You're given continuing elevation photos. A lot of structures you're seeing in these photos, um, are other ones that we'll be presenting. Uh, here's some interior photos of the front structure.
I'm not sure we need to see all that.
Okay.
So, um, are you gonna show them all to us, or do you want us to vote on? We should probably do them one at a time, is that possible?
Yep.
But they're not all adjacent to each other, are they?
Some are adjacent, some are not.
79th, the next one, Norman, is that adjacent? Well, let's just do them one at a time, it's probably better.
So the overall plan for everyone, uh, is we're gonna demolish the structure, take out any basements, slabs, foundations, footings, drives, whatever is existing. We're gonna backfill, topsoil, seed, and straw, so that will be the conversation point for everyone I'll be presenting this morning.
Okay, thank you, that's.
Sure thing.
Okay. Uh, so we were on page 13, this one first. Give a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for demolition of 2806, correct, East 79th Street?
We're actually on 2826.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're on page 12.
That was my fault, I apologize.
Make the motion for demolition of the property at 2826 East 79th Street.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2806 79th Street is next, which is 2025-013.
This one happens to be adjacent to the one we just reviewed. It's just a long, uh, rectangular, um, structure. Again, the city's owned it since 2018, it is condemned. It's just north of the one we reviewed. Presentation is set up the same with your interior, exterior photos, things like that. This is your exterior structure and your orientations.
Mr. Martin? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the demolition of 2806 East 79th Street.
Second. Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next one is at 10523 Norman Avenue.
Norman is a single family, so you're gonna start seeing some single families coming in. Again, the city owns it, it is condemned, we have done our environmental due diligence. Again, entire structure, basements, footings, so forth, will come out, backfill, seed, straw. Removing over, uh, east on 105, um, the south. And here are your exterior photos of this particular structure.
A little overgrown.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the demolition of 10523 Norman Avenue.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Um, the next few are on Hudson Avenue, the last three, so first one is 10512 Hudson Avenue.
Again, another beautiful structure, single family, city owns it, it is condemned, we've done our due diligence. Full demolition, backfill, seed, and straw.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of EC 2005-004, located at 10512 Hudson Avenue.
A second?
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next one is at 10524 Hudson.
Single family, city owns it, it is condemned, full demolition.
We just need one picture to verify, it's state. Oh, oh, it's the back, okay, that's good.
Here's your, um, exterior photos.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of demolition EC 2025-005, located at 10524 Hudson Avenue.
A second?
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. And the last one is at 10525 Hudson Avenue.
Okay, this one is directly across the street from the one we just saw, it is an abandoned old small church. Uh, again, the city owns it, um, condemned, we've done our environmental surveys. Full demolition, there is a basement in this one, just by the way, um, full demolition, seed, straw, and backfill.
Madam Chair, I look, move for approval of EC 2025-006, located at 10525 Hudson Avenue.
A second?
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. There you go, that was easy.
Wonderful, thank you.
Um, do you want us to go back to 54 and Bridge, or not yet?
Uh, Andrew is pulling into the garage.
Okay, we're gonna go on then. So just to note, for those of you that are here, um, we're gonna postpone Shaker Square, um, to the next meeting. Uh, and so the next item up is the Warner Swayze project at 57101 Carnegie. Erica's gonna chair this, um, uh, just because I have a conflict. Um, this is here for schematic approval and, um, we're going to, they're gonna take all your comments into consideration. There won't be an official action. They will come back for the demolition at the next meeting, but they'll take the comments, since they're gonna be back for, concept, or for final, anyway, so.
Just give the Chair a moment to step out. Um, good morning and welcome, everyone. I'm just gonna ask you to swear in, state your name and address, and if there's anyone available from your team online, we'll ask them to do the same.
Sword arms. Uh, I'm Nick Slaughterback from Moody Knowan, uh, I'm at the Cleveland office at 1621 Euclid Avenue at the BF Keith Building.
Thank you.
My name's Stephanie Hamer, I'm with Moody Knowan, I'm in the Columbus office, 300 Spruce Street, Columbus, Ohio.
Thank you.
Well, Basil, developer with Penrose, um, offices in Cincinnati, Ohio, on Vine Street.
Thank you.
Peppers with Midtown Cleveland Inc., by Pals in Euclid, Cleveland, Ohio.
Thank you so much. Any of your teammates online today? Okay, um, you do have the clicker, um, as you've probably heard, there's a bit of a delay. But feel free to go ahead and get started.
Well, thank you, everyone, um, members of the Commission, I appreciate the time this morning. You can go ahead and switch to the, like, overview. So, um, we have been working on, um, the Warner Swayze development for, uh, a long time, since 2018. And, uh, we're excited to finally be at this point. Uh, we've never been closer to being able to actually have it ready to go and be able to bring this building back to life. And so it's, it's a very exciting time. One of the reasons why we're here today is, uh, as we've continued to progress towards our closing later this year, we're trying to figure out the timing of the various permits that we have in place. Um, and we're proposing a stabilization phase, which includes some demolition to start earlier than our closing in November. Um, a lot of that is because of some of the sources we have have some, um, strict timelines that could go away earlier in the fall. So we wanna make sure that we actually have access to those and can use those, and also get some of the work done to stabilize the city-owned asset, um, in the meantime. Primarily, the, um, state historic tax credits, um, those can no longer be paired with low-income housing tax credits. There's a legislation a few years ago that prevented that. And so that is one big time, um, time concern we have with making sure that this project can move forward today. Um, and there's other various sources that could go away sooner. But, um, we recently presented at the Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review, um, yesterday morning, and received approval on the demolition. And so we wanted to come in front of this group and, um, talk more about, take your comments and feedback, and then come back for final approval. And we, there's never been so much support for this project than there is right now. Um, our partners at Midtown Inc. have been, um, the main reason why we are here today, to getting us to this point. And so we're really excited and hopeful that we can bring a win to their neighborhood and the city of Cleveland, um, later this year. So Warner Swayze, um, is located in Midtown neighborhood just east of downtown Cleveland. You can see the, the project site outline there, um, next to city-owned facility. These are the, some of the existing conditions kind of surrounding, um, Warner Swayze. And so this is the, the building. So this will be a combination of two low-income housing tax credit condos, so we have two 9% awards from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. There'll be a first-floor common area with shared space for both. It'll have 112 units, so 56 units in each condo on floors two through five. These are some of the existing conditions that unfortunately will be demolished. And then I can turn it over to, uh, the Moody Knowan team.
Hi, thank you again for having us. This is our proposed site plan, uh, that shows the demolition of the sheds and also one of the buildings that we call Building Six. Um, that allows us to have, um, parking space in the courtyard. Our site plan does not propose any new curb cuts. Um, we know that there is a new construction happening along Carnegie, the city with the wire lines, and we are gonna be working with them to get our design to mesh with what they have. We'll be extending the apron over on the, um, east side in that back drive. Going, so here are some of the amenities that we're proposing on the site, um, raised planter beds, pedestrian pathways, you know, between the parking spaces to help, um, get residents and families from the parking to the entry, which is gonna be at, right at the knuckle in the inside corner of the building. The language we call, we call the front lawn building, along Carnegie, the Carnegie building, and then the triangle building, we call the wedge. The wedge will be also a future phase. Also, we will have accessible pathways throughout the site, all with a 2% or less slope. Um, the plantings on the site are all proposed native plants. Then also looking at the industrial aesthetic for our planter beds, and then also some of our proposed benches. This is the diagram showing the buildings that we are proposing to demolish. We have worked really hard to not have to do it, but then after, um, structural review, we saw that just the corrosion on the existing steel is really just not feasible. Um, also, after talking with the fire department, with life safety, access to the inside part of the buildings really was not possible, you couldn't get a truck in there, um, with the heights, height limits. And so this, demoing the sheds and then also Building Six is, is gonna give us the, really the most usable and best design we can get. Um, we're also proposing then to demo the old gas building that's on the east side, uh, just to allow for more room for access. We are gonna have our, our trash room happens just south of the wedge building, and so allowing that access to happen for trash trucks. Uh, our stormwater management plan shows that we are not, the, the change of impervious to pervious is not enough to mitigate any need for additional stormwater detention, since the sheds were there already. So we, we will just be mitigating storm on the site without any additional need for that. Here's our, uh, first floor plan. The yellow denotes the resident amenities space, so we're gonna have a management office, fitness room, community room. And then the, the center portion with the elevator and stair, it's actually an existing stair that will be, uh, modernizing and making safer. And then, um, the, our elevators, we'll be putting two elevators in the existing free elevator shaft there. Um, the gray space is denoting services, and then the red space is future commercial space that will be, um, a warm dark shell for now, and it'll be built out for a future tenant. And then this is the typical unit floor, um, 112 total units, these units stack all the way up. So again, two and three are senior housing, and four and five are family housing. And then, again, like Will said, this is, um, historic tax credits. So we have been going, we've been working with SHPO on all of the window elevations, they are, um, are approved with them, we have millions where they once were, and then also just the single one over one lights on the backside and in the less prominent facades. Um, and then that, at the top, that elevation, the north elevation, you see we're adding storefront where that new, uh, commercial tenant would be, and then we would add indoors as needed, however the tenants break up. And then, uh, uh, an image of the new proposed building. Like this. Thank you, any questions?
Is there any staff report, uh, for this item, for this applicant there? Thank you.
Basically, everyone was fine with what had, uh, been presented yesterday. I think one of, or two, two points that were made. One was related to the parking lot and how the pedestrian paths in, along the parking lot, how they would be protected, whether or not they were wide enough for pedestrians to traverse through the parking lot, and how, um, they would be, that pathway would be protected with the parking spaces that abut the pathway. So whether they were using bumper stops or a, a raised curb, that was one question that came up. And then the other point that was made, and this was really related to the materials for, uh, the building, and I believe it was related to the basement, they just did not wanna see the basement window wells being used or being filled in with block, CMU blocks. So those were really the only two kind of outstanding things, I would say, but other than that, everybody is very enthused about the project and really ready to see it move forward, so, yeah.
Thank you so much, Kim. All right, um, any comments or questions from the Commission?
Um, Madam Chair, to the applicant, following up with Kim's comment, it seems like the kind of precedent photo show on the, in the left-hand screen shows there's like a tree planted in kind of the pedestrian walk, is that the same kind of accommodation? And then also, will we, will we be seeing raised curbs along that walk to her comment?
Yeah, I think we haven't, we haven't figured out how we're going to address the comments we received yesterday yet. But yet, we, I think. But yet, we, I think, trees within the in those islands are definitely something we can look at as well. Yeah. Yeah.
They seem to be rather large and be kind of like not landscape it.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And I think it it looks like there's a raised curb condition there. I imagine it's not, you know, just flush the flush the pavement. Yeah.
Yeah, I think this part of next steps, that's the next iteration of these plans will be to put those comments in and then come back for the the final review.
Is there any response to the window well or the basement window well comment or?
So we will, anything that we touch that is also going to have to be approved by SHPO. And so we're going to be working with them to make sure we're we're compliant with everything, and then we'll provide those details when we come back.
Just looking to the fellow commission, I know we started this talking about timelines. And so are we good for any final to go through staff? Okay.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the design as presented. Any accommodations or recommendations at this meeting to be approved through staff?
A second.
We actually don't have quorum to make a motion or?
Yeah.
Okay.
For review only. Yeah.
Well.
That is my.
Thank you, then.
Thank you all for presenting today. But so we can just proceed without.
It's approved by us in our hearts. Yes.
I guess just a procedural question, Mark. I know we don't have quorum today, but as far as them, would they have to come back to us? Then in order for us to make that approval for them to continue to work with you all?
So in the past, we have reviewed them, and then the commission just voted at the next meeting. So.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Pardon? Sounds like we'll just need to have, we won't need the the presentation. So more so, just it'll be on the agenda for us to be able to approve. For sure. Yeah, we'll work with him and make sure you guys have that information. Thank you so much.
Should I retrieve Lillian? We are, yeah, we're skipping. Do we have the West Fifty Fourth? Okay, going all the way back.
We're going back to page nine, which is two zero two four dash zero one, Fifty Fourth and Bridge Single Family Homes. This is new construction for conceptual approval. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? And then press your green button.
Okay, I'm Martin Smith. I'm partners with Andrew Gottlieb from Key State Homes. He's the developer. I actually live at eighteen fifty West Fifty Second Street, which is adjacent to the east of this parcel. The parcel borders West Fifty Fourth Street near the corner of Bridge. This is kind of a obviously, I purchased this with my wife back probably ten, twelve years ago. We were actually in front of you folks about seven, eight years ago. We had initial approval. We were doing six townhome units, two buildings with three attached units on them. Because of financing constraints and the townhome market became rather saturated at that point in time, we decided to change gears, change developers, and now we are proposing six single-family individual units. In six townhome units. So you have a I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, okay. So Andrew can now talk about the particulars about the schematics and the drawings and such.
Hi, I'm Andrew Gally with Key State Homes. So this project was brought to brought to us, as Martin was saying, through him and another developer who named Bennett Builders at the time, they were going to propose to, they proposed and got approved for six homes on the site. We are also proposing six homes as well. The difference between us and the original plan that was set on this site is that we are doing six individual houses. And the reason why we wanted to do six individual houses is just due to economic constraints of what might be in the future, as well as the ability to finance each one separately. So that's why we are going a slow and steady approach on this project. As you can see, this is the existing site conditions from the southeast, southwest from the school across from across the street, as well as existing residents to the north. If you can go to the next slide. And so what we're proposing is six homes. They're all townhome styles in in townhome style. They're all three stories with a rooftop with a room on the on the top floor that could be a flex space for our office or another another bedroom. These are the style of these townhomes in nature. Currently, the commission in the past has approved this 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 type of product for us in a different area of Cleveland, actually Tremont. However, we wanted to bring this product over to the Detroit Shoreway. It is one of the most efficient products that we can build financially, just based off the fact that it is using a small footprint, as well as the ability to, you know, maximize that space with what we have. Can you go to the next slide? So this is the floor plan of those units. It's showing that it has a garage, and then everything above that garage allows for this product to be even more affordable, because we're building everything over the garage. It has kitchen living room on the first floor, dining area, and then the second floor has two bedrooms, and the third floor has, I'm sorry, the third floor has two bedrooms and two baths. And then the fourth floor has the extra bedroom flex space as well as a bath, and then obviously the large expansive twelve foot by, I think, thirty feet deck rooftop. Excellent. It's just showing the roof plan existing. And here are the elevations showing it, garage side, rear elevation and side elevation. And then there's side elevation and front elevation. And so that is what we're presenting for Fifty Fourth.
Nate is online. Nate, do you have a staff report?
Done muting. Good morning, everybody. This is Nate Law here. So this did come to our design review committee. Originally came in twenty twenty-four as the first case we saw, and it was tabled at that time for a conceptual review to allow the applicant to look at different site plans. This week, we saw it at conceptual review again with a revised site plan. It was approved five to three by the committee. The dissenting opinions focused on the site plan specifically not being ideal urban form and possibly looking at different ways to align the townhouses outside its current configuration. But the conditions placed on their conceptual approval were essentially to add a pedestrian walkway or pavers to the existing concrete drive in order to add pedestrian circulation for the site, to add for the hardy siding on the on the buildings to vary in color with warmer colors being preferred. And then on the unit four on the site plan, they wanted the sort of fourth story penthouse to be turned to match the other front-facing unit on West Fifty Fourth Street, and also the to have a landscaping plan when they come back for a schematic.
Yeah, so we're, we we definitely want to address the pedestrian walkway to papers. I think that's very good for urban planning, and we agree with that. The hardy siding going to warmer colors, I think that's not a problem. We can come up with some palatable colors that our clients can choose from. Turning the penthouse on the, we are looking at that to make sure we have the room, and if we could, we would love to do that. That's not a problem. And then landscaping, obviously, we will come back and and show the details of that satisfactory to what is needed and 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 welcoming. Probably be some sort of sustainable landscape, low maintenance.
Let's say the only thing I'd say is to also think about like the idea of this kind of like a front door. You know, for me, it's sort of could be enhanced, this idea of like, where's the front door? And, you know, this kind of if you go back to here, that last one, the renderings. You know, you know, the fronts of these, because they're garages, right? There's really no well, the whole ground floor, there's really no windows or no treatment, except for the front door, right? And the front door, I see that you have them having some glazing, but, you know, to the extent that the ground floor experience, especially on the street level, doesn't feel so well, opaque. And there's nothing you can do. It's a garage, but I think.
We could definitely add some glazing to that.
Think about the, the, just think about that a little bit. But but I understand it. Okay. Guess it's a thought. You'll be back for final.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as presented with the conditions from designer view to be worked with with staff.
A second.
Motion and second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Back to page twenty. Thank you, guys, very much. We'll see you guys.
Thank you very much.
This is the Nora Housing Project at five three four two, all the way to five three six zero, Standard Avenue. This is in northeast. You all swear to tell the you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? All right, have a seat. Your mic is already on.
Good morning, everyone. My name is DJ Keen. I'm with Signature Building Concepts. Next to me is Amy Kunkel, the architect for the project. On with us is Kim Scott from the Planning Department. Hi, she went back out, I guess. And then Ariel Washington, who we've been working on with the Design Review Board. And then finally, Anita Bradley, who is with Nora, and Nora stands for Northern Ohio Recovery Association. They're located at Fifty Fifth and Standard. Ms. Scott, how are you?
Great.
Good, thank you. So what we're proposing here is eight duplex units on the property. So the first slide kind of shows us the the streets, the front, the front, front of the property. And then if the next slide comes up and it shows the boundary of the property. So to the west of the property is Harvest Owl. They're a food packaging company. That's what's shown on the slide on the upper right-hand corner. And then to the east of the property are two single-family homes, and then, of course, down Homer and Standard all the way back to Fifty Fifth. So the next slide. This is our previous plan, and you can probably scroll right past that so we can talk about the current plan. So we had made adjustments at the recommendation of the Design Review Board to actually make the the project a little more linear and connected throughout. So some of the changes we made were some tree plantings, the center walkways or sidewalks between the two, two sets of units, two sets of parking kazooen height. And then we relocated the trash bin and the mailbox, which you'll see on the next slide. And you can skip that one. That's the previous one. So we moved the mailbox and the trash bins, and they'll just be rolling trash bins that'll be processed for rubbish service down to the the adjacent property down the street at Fifty Fifth. And then the sidewalk connects the two walkways. The residents will be able to get their mail and and deposit their trash off that sidewalk. Corrected a couple of other things, added some additional lighting in the parking, and then added a few trees at the request of the Design Review Board. Next slide. And again, you can blow past the previous. So we went to Petbot and addressed some of their issues concerning reach for the hydrants, location, accessibility, things of that nature. And that's all represented on this slide, as well as the detention, underground detention area that's that's servicing the site. The next slide. So this gets to some of the ancillary features of the project. The numbering, a sign that will go on the north north northeast corner of the property, and then some additional ancillary pictures that was that were requested by the Design Review Board. Most of the lighting we're going to use is solar-based, so we don't need to run electrical through the project. Again, just the ancillary features that were requested by the Design Review Board. Each unit is a duplex, roughly twelve hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half bath, an open floor plan on the first floor. And then we were asked to do a color design. So if you go to the next slide, this is the color rendering with the shingle colors and the base colors that are provided for the exterior of each unit. Next slide. And then we were asked to do a streetscape. Again, we colorized it for them and then changed windows, doors, siding. And then the gutters and the all the trim now is black as requested, and we had added a partition to the ceiling in the front by the door where it enters into the unit. The next slide. I think that's it. Right. So we also have Anita Bradley with us. Anita, did you want to say anything before we finished? Your arm's mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, every, hi, everyone. And thank you all for the hard work on this. No, just that we're looking forward to trying to be able to create these homes for individuals that are trying to re readjust to life, low-income families, particularly, you know, men and women with their with their children that can receive support services from our administrative office, which is about a three-minute walk. And so we're just excited and hope that we can, you know, be approved to move forward, even, you know, if you all have any additional suggestions for us.
Thank you. Is Kim? Any comments from local or anything we need to know? Might need to grab a mic.
Right. So they, the committee was looking for details in the landscape plan, I believe, and lighting, right? So.
The schematic, though. They're coming back.
This is for schematic.
Final.
You could come back to staff. Well, it's up to commission members, but we'll see what else there were.
So we have worked with this group for a number of months now. I think that the messaging has been clear, just in terms of what is required for an approval. And there had been some, I'll say, miscommunications. And so now we're at this point, we're finally before the planning commission for schematic approval. And I'm happy to support that. I think that the adjustments have been made that we had requested, so we're happy to be here at this point. And we just look forward to the continued evolution of this of this process and this project for final approval.
So it'd be okay, though, if it came back to local and staff. And if you can't agree on And if you can't agree on anything, they could come back here.
Yes.
I think that's fine, so you don't have to come back.
Thank you.
Therefore, final approval for the Nora Housing Project at twenty-three, I'm sorry, fifty-three forty-two through fifty-three sixty, Standard Avenue.
Second.
With the condition.
With the condition that you come back to staff for any additional recommendations.
Oh, a motion and a second.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
What that means is that if you, if you can't come to agreement at local or with staff, then you will have to come back. But if you guys can work everything out, the director has the authority to sign off at that point.
We'll work it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great project. So we have two mandatory referrals. First one is ordinance number two four six two zero five. This is authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Development to enter into property exchange with the Board of Education, which is CMSD, for the transfer of various properties to facilitate the efficient use of real estate and construction. And this is near JFK, for the JFK Athletic Stadium.
Welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Susie Andes. You know, I'm the Commissioner of Real Estate in the Mayor's Office of Capital Projects here at the City of Cleveland. And I have with me Mikel Jean-Baptiste, who is one of our new real estate project managers, who is assisting with this CMSD project and various others. And I also want to let you know that we have Trudy Andrewsky here from Community Development. The legislation does involve the Director of CD, so Trudy's here. And we also have a couple of guests from CMSD. We have David Riley, who's the attorney for, for CMSD, and Holly De La Santi, who is the Executive Director of Architectural Services for CMSD. Andy, can you advance this to the first slide? So the way that this legislation is structured, there's a couple of different things happening. The, the majority of the legislation authorizes the exchange of properties with CMSD. This is authorized under state law for the mutual benefit of the city and the school district. And so we have a swap that's taking place. You can advance to the next slide. The city will transfer three land bank lots to CMSD, two of which are on Parkwood pictured there for school purposes related to FDR Academy. And the next land bank parcel to be transferred is located on West Forty-Fourth Street. It's for newcomers academy, CMSD's newcomers academy. You can advance. So in exchange, the city will, CMSD will transfer to the city the former JFK site on Harvard, one seventy-one hundred Harvard Avenue for future community and economic development purposes. And Trudy's office has been involved with putting up the RFP for redevelopment of that property. In addition, part of this exchange is that the city will contribute two point one million dollars in bond funding for the construction of a new athletic stadium at the new JFK High School on Miles Avenue. The stadium will be on CMSD's property. It will be constructed by CMSD. The city will contribute the funding, and then there will be a shared use between the school and the city. As you know, the city's JFK Rec Center is immediately adjacent to the east. And so there'll be a shared use of the new athletic stadium worked out under a shared use agreement. So that's basically how the deal is structured and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I love the outcome of the shared project and for both, and it's a really good thing. It'd be highly utilized, obviously, and by both the Rec Center and JFK, so it's great. It's great, great, great outcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree. It's, these exchanges are very beneficial, you know. This is not the first one, as you know, that we've done around the city, and, and these outcomes tend to be very beneficial to both the school district and the city. And it's, it's, we're really grateful that CMSD partners with us on the reuse of, of their facilities, and we're happy to assist them with their school uses as well. So it's a nice partnership.
Madam Chair, what questions do the applicant? Is there any plan for the three lots that are being exchanged?
I will let Holly and David address that question. Thank you for the question.
I don't think there's any immediate plans.
Again, David Riley, Council of CMSD, there's no immediate plans to do anything with that? Oftentimes at our sites, we have tremendous problems with parent pickup and traffic flow at start of school and end of the school day. And hopefully, over time, these parcels will help us mitigate that issue as we consolidate land around us and revisit traffic patterns.
Thank you. Commission members?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the project as presented.
Second? Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Dan, are you doing the next one?
I am.
Okay. The next one's ordinance two five one two zero two five. This is authorizing the Director of Mayor's Office of Capital Projects to sell city-owned air rights. Interest no longer needed for public use on Scranton Road, AKA Eagle Avenue, GPP Medical Facility. Air rights, as usual.
Thank you, yes. It comes up occasionally, but not that often. I believe we have Nora Romanoff from Bedrock on the call. If not, she may be joining us. But basically, what the legislation does, it authorizes the Director of Capital Projects to sell an air rights parcel that's been created over the right-of-way of Scranton Avenue, also known as Eagle Avenue. We are selling the air rights to GPP Medical Facility LLC. This is part of the, the Bedrock Development. The Global Peak Performance at Cleveland Clinic Global Peak Performance Center is being constructed on, on either side of Scranton Avenue, and a portion of the building will actually straddle the roadway. If you forward to one of the last slides, this, there's a couple of details we can come back to. But go, go one further. Yes, so that's what the building looks like, and that is Scranton Avenue going under the building there. So because they're building over the right-of-way, we had them engage their surveyors to create this air rights parcel. It's basically, if you pictured in three D, there are, if you want to go back to a couple of slides, I can show you in detail, kind of looking from.
Basically, you need to get over the road.
Yeah, at various, there's various elevations underneath to assure clearance for traffic and, yes. And they will purchase this parcel. You can see kind of how it, how it looks in, in, in three D, looking from the northwest there, and that's the parcel itself. The Bedrock will purchase the parcel from us, from the city at fair market value, and.
We've already approved the project.
Yes, yes.
Look, is, is it actually a separate parcel above the roadway?
Yes.
That's actually.
Yes, it's an air rights parcel that's created at the standalone parcel, and it's, you know, it's, it's air instead of land. So, yeah, it's a little bit.
Water parcels, underwater leases, so if you can do underwater, you can do above, yes.
Yeah.
Air water.
Good point.
All right, commission members?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend approval for mandatory referral number two five one dash two oh two five.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony? Sorry, Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
There are eight administrative approvals. Just take a look, four on the front, and then a few just of the administrative vacations on the second page. And we can do one motion for all of them unless there are any questions for staff.
Madam Chair, I'm moving for the administrative approval, starting with ordinance number two three three dash two five. Resolution number three zero one dash two five.
A second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Curry?
Anthony?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. So anything for the practice report tonight?
I mean, this is the only thing to report, but this will have to, um, I'm going to have to, for staff and for you guys for the support over this transition period. The support has been really helpful.
You've done a great job, and I know it's been a lot of transition change, but nothing's slipped through the cracks, and we even made it through today. So eventually, we'll get more commission members, so, but, but, but thank you for, for doing such a great job.
We have applications, and really good applications, so.
Yes. So thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.